Got it, thank you. I passed. Kid one oh one. Kid one oh one.
You can now enter kindergarten.
Yeah. Hey, I thought they had to be at least to the first grade.
Oh, okay, sorry. Yeah, cuz you can, you can spell. So, yeah.
Spell. And count.
Okay.
I heard your trucker got pulled.
Yeah. Was that your fault? Did you have anything to do with that?
You don't. Got the recording started again?
I, I did, yeah, just came on. We almost lost the other last night, man, that came up quick.
I was.
I was glad we moved to a more interior bin earlier in the evening. Otherwise, it probably would've.
I had a hopper full of seeds. I had a hopper full of seeds. About eighty, eighty to ninety percent of them got into the truck.
Yeah.
So I said, I gotta unload them. Just have to. Have to leave them there. Come on. And I'm gonna drive up to eighteen oh six, I hear the grain bins got moving around again.
Again? Oh, boy.
Oh, we had them laying down in a low spot underside, I suppose.
Well, somebody had a, like a snapshot, then watched the wind come in off the lake. It looked like big sheets of ice coming across the lake. It feels crazy.
Oh, this one. Yeah, I didn't read it, but I mean it, I saw it. I was just gonna get the times. Do you see time? Do you see time?
No.
Okay, good, I thought that. That was back to the idea. Hmm, definitely no time signature.
Okay.
Only in the eye, god. So, did you see that note I left Travis regarding adding that social services bill? Okay.
Yep.
Okay, that was gonna be my.
Okay.
Nope, there's no time.
Morning.
Rick can do much harvestings, so.
No, he was coming beans last night, but he. I would assume they got rain also.
I didn't have, but we had it on our house.
Yeah, I didn't ask him where he was on, because.
It's hard to be upset about moisture, but there's certain times for it.
But it kind of just. Yeah, just need a break, right?
I mean, I'm enjoying the sixties and seventies, but.
But I'm not gonna enjoy like the forty for a high by next Friday.
Yeah. Uh, isn't there, uh, white flakes forecast next week?
Yes, like next Thursday.
Well, I'm glad he didn't use a four-letter word, I would have had to.
We are recording, Jean.
Yeah. So I got orders to get after the sun plants.
So who had, who had eight fifty seven for Rick?
You got her.
No, there wasn't a pool.
No.
I started two hours early, it still took this long, everything went on. As muted as I can make it.
Pun intended on that one. I remember one time I had a set of puns and the guy who said it too goes, no pun intended, right? I said, no, I meant to.
I should've, I meant to.
And he laughs every, he's like, I've never heard of him, I said, no, I wasn't intended.
Oh, does he?
All right, nine o'clock, I'll call this meeting of the Mercer County Commission to order. As far as the agenda goes, we'd like to add social service building update to other business. Anything else? If not, can I get a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Oh, move to approve.
Motion by Jamie, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Liza. Any discussion? Seeing none, Jamie?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
All vote aye, that motion passes. Uh, we have several meeting minutes, or no, just two, I guess.
No, well, actually, three.
Three, okay. So we had October fourth, October fifth, and what's the other one?
There's still the fifth.
Oh, that's right.
Delegate budget and then delegate.
Right, I forgot we had two that night, so. Okay, let's do the October fourth minutes. I'll make a motion to approve the October fourth minutes. Motion by Rick, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Jean. Any discussion, corrections, or additions to the minutes? Seeing none, Rick?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
All vote aye, that motion passes. Um, October fifth, special budget meeting minutes.
Morning, Dan. The other thing we got is those social services, open update. Um, minutes.
Minutes.
We just started.
I'll make a motion to approve the October fifth minutes.
Okay, motion by Jean.
I'll second.
Second by Rick. Any discussion, corrections, or additions to the minutes? Seeing none, Jean?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
All vote aye, that motion passes. Uh, now we have the other special meeting, um, October fifth minutes, um, for the, for the delegate.
I'll move to approve.
Okay, motion by Jamie to approve, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Liza. Any discussion, corrections, or additions? Seeing none, Jamie?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
All vote aye, that motion passes. Okay. That should be all the notes, and we do our bills.
And then once Travis signs everything, what I'll do for you guys is I'll make an electronic copy of the final budget approved and email it to you, so then you guys have.
Thank you.
Sounds great.
Don't wanna go over your printing budget.
Pardon?
They're gonna say, what happened to all your trees? We're in the prairie.
Morning, Dan. Good morning.
You just missed it, we approved, we just read the minutes.
So, now Dan's trying to be a comedian. Jamie was throwing out funds earlier, so.
I suppose.
It's, I think the. The chiller.
Oh, you just seen here, Sam's in.
I know, I'm sorry.
She just found her.
It's just so few pages. Oh, okay, so it's not as bad as it's on this one. So I'm not sure what's in heavy, unless it's coming, but.
Maybe there's a second one.
It's less than half of gonna be, so. It's gotta be in here somewhere.
I had the, uh, I think the only words I could use is just call the transmission. Then the hopper, we run it out. That one out, and, uh, once I get an alarm, clean grain elevator block, what?
Says one of them.
Block for foot lanes.
I'm like, what, what?
Looked the trap open and ran the machine, emptied it.
It's okay.
Went back in and. Still had a lot, what the heck's going on? So I looked in the hopper, the elevator wasn't running. What the hell? Dropped the arm down and grabbed the sprock. Okay, we won't talk.
Right, and the same, so we're in the paper. Am I retarded or something? Okay, price, two of them.
Well, I guess that's.
Two of them. So I got one.
And some of the. Belt, the second, and that was, am I right? Particles off the ground.
But that's not the.
Placing that.
Which is?
Transmission, probably a hopper. There's some burning. I ended up having to go underneath it, loosen up the belts, drives that whole system. Oh, we got smoke coming out of the truck.
Cause one, also that's for patrol, and one is for K nine.
Very different.
Sign of fire.
Right.
This whole line.
These two together.
There should be this.
Yes, there should be two lines here, not just.
Cause one's for K nine, one's for regular patrol. So these two together. Test two, test two, four. But how did that get to that?
This, plus this, plus this.
Oh, we had to add that in too. There's a chunky end.
Okay. By the time you guys looked at it, it should be good, right?
Some of the numbers weren't quite matching up.
There wasn't enough columns.
Gotcha.
I love that.
So this is, this is the apartment we've been waiting for a long time? Time they showed up, or?
Those are from the year before.
Oh.
So we still have two that were this year too, but then I have two from the year before that didn't show up.
Okay.
So. Or that's my understanding, anyway.
That's the, city GTA owns it, so we have to talk to them, cuz they're essentially the landlord of that building. Yeah.
It's like every month.
No, and it's, it's either really, really cold in there.
Or really, really hot.
Yeah. There's, there's no, there's no goalie line, so. So should we put it harder in for twenty thirty?
Yes. Lock in the right room. We're all just.
I was kinda half serious. Well, it's saying, nobody said I was off my rock.
So this the money we're gonna spend out of the. Special fund for.
That's the special vehicle fund.
Okay, that's for this year, so, yeah, um.
That comes out of that special vehicle fund we called?
Well, part of it does. There was eight thousand four ninety, this much left, so then we took the extra of the pot of Terry's six six two. So that line item this year will go over, but that's because he got us. So basically, right now, that special vehicle, that twenty two is zero value. He used all of it. We also don't have any big detractors.
So we don't, no question.
No, yeah, no extra there.
Is this weird, sorry, just.
So is that all of the chemical for next year, ordered?
Okay, that would be for the weed board?
Yeah, the weed's wood.
I, I'm gonna assume it is.
It's most of it.
Cause he makes his, yeah, I don't know if he makes one more. We have to call Brad and Alson.
Couple of their face paint.
I said, that's not a.
It's not ninety two dollars?
I know.
Six thousand dollars.
Does it got gold too?
That's not. No, because I put that much at my feet. That's more than.
Are you getting them in there?
Just don't, just probably have.
That don't look like a lot.
Probably what we could use after the last couple of months.
It actually might be needed.
Nothing, he did nothing.
Boring.
And this week's jog, I mean, kinda mentioned.
We still have these licenses?
Do you mind?
Do we really?
I can use this for coffee?
Sure, okay.
I just wanna ask. Before I do it. Cuz I know I got all these meetings I gotta put in too.
Oh.
That's where I went.
I'm like, why the?
Seriously, Travis? Oh, my lord.
Uh, just one other day.
Yep. Is it the weather?
Cuz we. I remember when I was in high school, I did all like that, and the classmates who'd been with me for years, like, when did you become so funny? I'm like, well, I've always been this funny, I just didn't talk.
Let it grow, we're done right now.
When you look back and see a smile on my face, it's good, that was something funny.
Right, I just didn't tell ya.
Now that I think of it, Travis, when is the next meeting?
Um.
That I'm supposed to be attending.
I don't think they've scheduled one, um. I don't think they have a standing one, do they? They kinda meet as needed?
No, there is a standing date.
Okay.
If they do, I don't know, they used to be, back in the day, it doesn't work what they have planned.
Okay.
Since they stopped, now for me, it's only been, uh. Need to know basis, like, I may know.
Okay.
I wish they would, kind of, would have a standard meeting.
Yeah, maybe we can request that.
I think we should.
Yeah. With whether they have something or not, just say.
And they can just, they can cancel it.
Right.
There's really not that much to talk about that, but at least have a.
Schedule a meeting once a month or something.
I guess I can send them a message and ask them when next.
Some of this works, okay, there is.
Oh, no. It's a twenty eight.
I'll ask the busker.
This big one is for that. Uh, twenty seven, county twenty seven, which was all.
But then there's this.
I have buskers for sure. I don't know.
These are twenty percent that we pay.
To the contractor.
Yeah, to, yeah. This is the month of twenty seven.
Sorry, just automatically hit the bridge.
No, this is not like it. Does anybody know all of these one of those horses?
I do not.
No. Have to ask Turner's.
Ask Turner's while we're gonna do it.
Yeah. Cause I'm not sure.
You're the portfolio.
That's what I thought. It might be stuck at Todd too, the state attorney, it may be stuck at the state attorney's office.
Oh, now it's.
Now it's Jean's problem.
Now it's back at Jean, huh?
Yep.
All right, well, let's talk.
Is he gonna be here today?
I don't know.
Yeah, I talked to him this morning, he didn't think he'd get here until after ten.
Better yet, I'll just send him a text.
There you go.
Yeah, we're in a meeting, but there was a question on that.
Just if we gotten everything. No, that's. Cause I thought it was usually like sixty or seventy thousand, isn't it?
Yeah, that would be.
Didn't we have one last time? There's been a few bills.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Last time, meeting before.
We can look at that and see if we got it.
It's just that.
Are they looking for? I might just, still, I was a concert.
I'll just. So this is the money that we pay for, but then we'll be to get the first, for the other part of it?
That's the, that's our twenty percent that will be directly, and then they pay the other eighty percent. What then on?
Oh, so that's separate.
Sign of that will get.
We will get reimbursed.
First, the eighty percent you're, okay.
That's where I was.
That I didn't understand, I just saw the twenty percent, cuz it's on the.
So it actually wasn't one big one, it's been a couple of big ones, I mean.
Right.
Then, maybe. Then maybe it'll be next month for the show. Jim showed us that they're like building up, so. It's hard to read these.
Right, it's hard to find it.
But I'm pretty sure we had.
Cindy, we didn't stick anybody in front of you this time.
I looked, I looked before I walked in, it's like, I should probably check that cause people do it. It's just you. I'm such a habit person, it's ridiculous.
Yeah.
That's that counseling stuff.
Oh, right, that pays for.
Employee assistance program.
The place that says program. Yes.
Shouldn't this one have like a number? I think it should be. One, six, six, seven, I might miss something. Is that a registered partner?
Yeah.
We could just mark it.
We need to get.
Yep.
Let's, yeah, exactly, we need to have them here, so. But yeah, let's do that, make a note, and then I'll make sure, I guess, I don't know. Yeah. Make sure it's all. That it's not off by that much. Right.
Strike the resistor, I gotta get my, I won't take the rest yet.
Who said?
I seen that winter as.
Yeah, we gotta throw all some stuff, we gotta dream, but we gotta listen to stuff on the third rounds.
I can't even run a new pen today.
Yes, and I appreciate it.
Fingers.
I'll make a motion to approve the bills.
We haven't got through all of them yet.
Hold on, right?
Oh, I thought you were done.
We were paused.
Yeah, the West River beast, the beast of West River.
They caught something. Yeah, every phone, every phone call.
I don't remember getting a call that day.
Landlines.
Landlines.
They're all gone anyway.
How you pronounce that name? Yeah, boy, yeah.
That's a paper.
Oh, no, he'll say it, pronounce that name.
We wanna know, we wanna know, right?
It'll, for her it'll be real easy, but for us it's like.
If I can bring that information back.
Pass your office. Just get one of them scrawny letters and say, okay, that's my last name.
No, it's good.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve it. Bills as presented.
Okay, a motion by Rick to approve the bills as presented, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Jean, any discussion? Seeing none, Rick?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Eliza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
All vote aye, that motion passes. Next on the agenda, planning and zoning, Cindy?
Okay, so, for those of you who haven't done this before, they have, the taxpayers have until October first to pay the, the most delinquent taxes, like say twenty-twenty, and if they haven't paid it by October first, then they have to pay all three years, and the sheriff fee, and the specials, and to estimate at twenty-twenty-three, by the auction date, or it becomes the county's property, right Carmen, is that how it works?
Yes, yes.
So, they have until, I think it's the twenty-first of November is the auction date?
Actually, yeah, then they'd have to pay everything off in order to get their property back, October first was just for twenty-twenty.
Right.
They had to pay that off.
Which is gone.
Which is passed.
It's gone, yes, so now it would be everything, and then, and these appraisals are the cost of the property, with everything on it.
The taxes do, yeah.
The only one that I had a question on was the Stanton one, cause if I remember right, Todd was saying that we can't put utilities.
That's what I thought.
I, no, I think what.
Do you want me to explain, or do you wanna explain?
Let me see if I'm right or not Travis, but I think what he said is, as a county, we can't, we don't pay appraisals. But they are. But these people can. Right. Oh, okay, cause I have both of the values on there, so. Not the owners don't.
Right. So if they come in now, between now and the auction date, they only have to pay twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three.
Okay.
That anybody that buys it on the auction, they have to pay the estimate as well.
Right, I think so.
And then on the.
And say, I thought that, yeah, I was wondering about that.
Which twenty-twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two would be the three years.
It is three years, yeah, and then what we're talking about on the utilities, the cities can assess them against them, if it's bought, the buyer essentially pays those and the cities get made whole, because the cities had to pay those specials.
But if the county buy it, gets it back then?
If, if, if it's not sold at the auction, and then it's offered to the city for a dollar and the city rejects it, those still stay on there, however, the county is not responsible to pay the specials.
Oh, okay.
Or any of the taxes, cause essentially we're the taxing authority. And then at a later date, if, for whatever reason, the county never pays the specials.
Right, but if you sell it, then the person provides it, like if I buy it?
Okay, Don?
So Cindy, then when you did the estimate for two thousand twenty-three, you moved towards the specials, if that was not squared out in the estimate sheet?
Yeah, I have the, I got the specials from the cities, it's on this worksheet.
Just looking to see if these.
But this is just a list, and they have time to come in and pay.
Yeah, up until the auction, in fact, the morning of the auction, they could come in and pay the three. November twenty-first would be the auction date, the third Tuesday of the month.
Do we have a time on that, or?
That's where I need, what I wanna do is ask you guys to make a motion first to approve.
The list.
Appraisals as presented, then I want, we need to have a public hearing after November first, just gives the public a chance to come in and look at this, and give the input, and, um, this was on my auditors list, and then the sale, and then I want you guys to make a motion to approve the sale at ten AM on November twenty-first.
Okay.
So I got three motions I need. So is what Don's on here for? Are they all included together? No. Don's, Don's is. Don's is. Yours is different, Don?
Yes.
Okay, okay. And I did give you a copy.
Just for clarification, so, these individuals have until nine fifty-nine on the day of the sale to come in and pay their twenty-twenty.
No, all three.
No, your fault.
Yep, they have to pay it in all.
They have to pay all three years, the sheriff's fee.
Yep.
If they would've paid it off by October first, they just had to pay the twenty-twenty-two.
For the twenty-twenty.
Twenty-twenty.
Yeah.
Twenty-twenty.
Twenty-twenty.
So if they come in, if they come in between now and then, they pay the sheriff fee, the twenty-twenty, and the twenty-twenty-two?
Yep.
And then do they pay the twenty-twenty-three specials?
No, they just have to pay the three years delinquent, and the sheriff's.
The sheriff is looking at the columns on that.
Just column.
The sheriff fee, and the twenty-twenty, or twenty-twenty-two.
Yep.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay.
But if people wanna buy it on auction?
Then it's all.
That's when it all.
Then it's the, then it's the blue, is the, is the minimum price.
Okay, yeah, the blue is the sum.
At the auction.
So we're past the date as to when they can come in and pay the twenty-twenty-two taxes.
Twenty-twenty.
Twenty-twenty.
What did I say?
You said twenty-twenty-two.
I meant twenty-twenty.
Yeah.
That's okay.
It's good you guys know what I mean, not what I say. Okay, so we're past that date, so these on the list.
Are the list.
Have to pay the entire bill.
Yep.
Right. And they wouldn't be on this list if they would've paid by October one.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that is, October one is what triggered this list.
All for clarification.
Yep.
So that, okay.
And now you just need a motion to approve.
The minimum.
The minimum.
The list first, yep.
The list with the minimum price, correct?
Correct.
Yep, okay, is there a motion to approve the delinquent tax list with the minimum price?
Still looked.
Motion by Eliza, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Jamie, any discussion?
I would. Where is, um, just for, um, I think it's lot, Miller first, I read these before, and there was one of them I was confused on. Where's the Miller first edition?
Isn't it out there by the trailer court?
Trailer.
It's out there by the, you mean south in vacant lots?
Yeah, it's west of the.
It's by the trailer court, kinda.
Across the road tracks.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Okay, Eliza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Rick? Jean?
Aye.
All vote aye, that motion passes. So then the second one would be to set the hearing date?
A public hearing for our next meeting, November first, at like eleven AM.
Okay. Is there a motion to set a public hearing for the appraisals of lands on November first at eleven AM?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Jamie, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Eliza, any discussion? Seeing none, Jamie?
Aye.
Eliza?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
All vote aye, that motion passes. And then now we have to set the date and time.
Auction date, um, in time, yes, and it'd be November twenty-first at ten AM, cause that's normally what they have.
November when? Twenty-first.
Third Tuesday of the month, yep. And that's separate from the commission meeting.
And that's here, right?
Yes, that will be here, and after this meeting, see, these all get put in the paper, two weeks, every, I've got them set up, so.
And, and it's not a meeting, it's just an auction set, so the commission doesn't have to be here, we don't, it's, it's handled by the auditor department.
Well, you can be here if you wanna purchase one of them.
Correct.
But not as a commissioner.
Yes. Okay, is there a motion to set the sale date and time?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Jamie to set the deal, the sale date of November twenty-first at ten AM, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Eliza, any discussion? Seeing none, Jamie?
Aye.
Eliza?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
All vote aye, that motion passes.
Thank you.
Anything else on planning and zoning?
Nope.
Thanks for putting us all together.
Cindy, this looks like it's for November first. Okay, that's our P and Z meeting this week. Oh, okay. But you guys will get it on November first, and since it's a whole book, I thought you might want it ahead of time.
Appreciate that, definitely, thank you.
And I have been getting a lot of letters in support. And I have been getting a lot of letters in support, I've, every day when I put them together, then I get another letter, so I did put what I have so far in your, in your airbox. You guys haven't seen them yet.
Oh, okay.
You'll see them tomorrow.
Most up to date ones. Okay. Um, the next thing on here is your peruse issue, Cindy, I have talked to Todd a couple times on it. I did get a letter from the auditor's office about whether it should be included or not, the letter states that yours should be, states that Jim shouldn't be. Conversations with Todd and I, we don't, we disagree that Jim should be excluded. He has a couple calls into PERS, and when he gets that information, he can advise us on the correct way to proceed. So we're still working on it. So far, everybody's in agreement with yours, it's Jim's and we, Todd and I have discussed that it, we don't see Jim's as being disqualified and yours qualified, because we feel they're the same, so once we have that clarification, we will proceed.
I know, I kind of wonder that myself, it's like, well, it's reportable now, since you guys combined it.
Right, so.
So.
Yes.
Unfortunately, it's still a work in progress, but hopefully we're chipping away at it and getting closer.
Okay. So, thank you. By the time you get up there, Don, it'll be 9:45.
Okay, so you guys all got a copy of this, right?
Yep.
Okay, so what happens is we have to report checks that have never been claimed, the unclaimed property report, I have two, unclaimed property division. I have two of them this year that are going to go. I sent, we generally send out two notices to the people, trying to get them to respond, and if they don't, then we have to send out an official unclaimed letter to them. I have gotten, one of them came back right away, unclaimed property told me I didn't have to pursue that one further, because it was undeliverable, that was my attempt. The other one, they just apparently, for whatever reason, are not responding, so those two checks have to go to unclaimed. So the payment on them has to be stopped for the current ones, and then I will write one big one to unclaimed property. So it works just like the reissuance of checks when I come in here, so I'm guessing I need a motion from you guys, so that I can stop payment and reissue only to unclaimed property instead of.
Can it be in one motion, or do we need to do them separate? Two in one?
I have no issue with that.
So, let's see. So you want a motion to stop payment on, is the check number that 54104?
Yep.
Right, and 54134?
Yes.
So that you can issue a full check to unclaimed properties division?
Bless your motion.
Yeah.
Okay, motion by Eliza, second by Jamie. Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, Eliza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
All vote aye, that motion passes.
Thank you.
Have a great rest of your day.
Thank you. Let's look at Mr. McLean, library board appointment. Do we get to the applicant?
Dr. One, just going to give you a copy of her application, Martha Anderson.
Okay.
Martha Anderson.
And it's he, and.
Yes, she's filling in a vacancy in.
Was it Joelle that resigned, I think? She moved, so she had to, she could no longer be on the board, so that was a vacancy from June, I believe.
I'll make a motion to approve Martha Anderson to the McLean Mercer Regional Library Board.
Motion by Jamie to appoint Martha Anderson to the unexpired term, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Eliza, any discussion? Do you have a question, Jean, or?
I got a question, it's like, does anybody know this lady? I don't know.
Well, that was gonna be mine. Has anyone, any objection?
I'm gonna go to my address.
So, she's qualified.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, Jamie?
Aye.
Eliza?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
All vote aye, that motion passes. Social service building update?
Okay, we got the money.
Oh.
Eighty-five thousand, writing the deed since here.
Okay.
So that's a done deal. The thing was, and I know Jim talked to you about this, Jamie, he's requesting, okay, so that eighty-five thousand, you know, goes into that general fund for sales, rental, what it's supposed to. So that's where it's at. But Jim is requesting if he can use the eighty-five thousand for the Chiller project, rather than taking that.
To move it to the building in grounds?
Yeah.
Or the building fund?
Okay.
Just because of the big projects we do have.
Yeah.
Going on.
Rather than, he's got a CD, but he'd rather just keep that in a CD and making money and if there's, you know, nobody's.
So we would just have to make a motion that we would allow the funds from that sale to be put in his big fund, okay?
I'd like to make a motion to move the eighty-five thousand from the sale of social service building to the building fund.
Okay, motion by Jamie, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Eliza, any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, Jamie?
Aye.
Eliza?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
All vote aye, that motion passes.
I have one more question on it, I noticed that we have the propane bill go through for that building, are we paying for all the propane on that?
Actually, I know Jim didn't fill it for the winter.
Okay.
He, yeah, there's, that was was that Friday, he had asked about that, if I had heard and then this all came up, because he said that, that he needed to get propane figured out.
Yeah, because I noticed it was on the list for the propane and I just didn't know.
Oh, so maybe we need I don't think he filled it.
I know he didn't fill it.
Unless he just started trying it all.
Because we were waiting, and I know it was getting close, but we, I know he did not fill it, so the, you're looking at.
In the bills, it had the social service building on it with the propane.
All right.
Maybe check on that?
Yeah, let me check on that, but.
We might need a credit, is what you're saying?
Right.
Yeah.
Because propane is not cheap.
Right, not a solid credit, but a repayment.
I did think that.
Is your, is your question that we sold the property and then propane got filled and we possibly got billed for it?
No, because it's not completely sold yet, because the deed isn't in.
No, no, deed, it's a done deal, we got the cash in the bank.
Okay.
Done deal. We're gonna do the warrant.
Because if you look through our bills, it has a propane bill for the social service building, and I don't know, I didn't look at the date when it actually occurred. I didn't know the social service building actually got sold.
It just like that happened yesterday, so.
Okay.
So yes, we.
Maybe just check on it?
We should find out.
No, I'll make a note.
After or before the sale date.
Right.
And I know we didn't fill it. I've got a note, so I'll check on it.
Hi, guys. Can you be sure to sign it, please?
That's all we.
Thank you.
Sale date was yesterday, wasn't it?
Yes.
So I was big.
Yeah.
But I just don't. Just like it.
But I got a note, I'll check on seeing.
Okay.
Great news, good deal.
All right, we got a little time here, yep. Portfolio updates, since I always put somebody on the spot, I'll go first today. Not much on the portfolio updates, but I thought this would be the opportunity to talk about the Association of Counties conference, I thought it was a good conference, lot of vendors, lot of good information. As far as budget stuff goes, what we've been talking about over the last few weeks, as far as the budget goes, if we want to make changes after the first of the year to reinstate things or change things around, we can do that. Essentially, what we did to balance the budget was required, I got confirmation from numerous auditors, Association of County people that what I was discussing during the meetings is is possible to do, so we'll just have to take a look of anything that we want to change after the first of the year and make budget amendments on those. Library Board hasn't met since September. The Lewis and Clark development hasn't met since the ANO1 I talked about a couple meetings ago. PNZ is tomorrow, like Cindy mentioned. So I don't have much for updates, and I'll go to Eliza next.
Unfortunately, I wasn't able to go to the airport meeting, because the first meeting they tried to have, they didn't have a quorum, so then they scheduled it again for the next week, which just happened to be when the ambulance meeting was. So at the ambulance meeting, though, it was discussed that we still have not gotten the ambulance that we ordered over two years ago, but apparently the good news is, is that it's actually at engineering right now, so they're hopeful that it's actually starting the process. But we have continued then to look to see if we could order another ambulance due to the fact that this one has taken so long to get in. And I think we've decided last night which company we're gonna go with, but we're just waiting to see about a revised bill with them. And they are working on that taxation portion, but they don't think that they're gonna actually dive into that until February, because it's got a lot entailed with it in order to see if they're gonna go into that or what they need to do for that, and they need to have elections held and everything. So they'll probably be contacting you, Carmen, because apparently it needs, the elections need to be done by the auditor for that, when they do get to that point.
When would the, I know we're waiting on one, but what is the due replacement date? 2025?
I believe is what they said, yeah.
Okay.
And they said, don't wait till the very last year to do it, is what they told them.
Okay. Okay, I'm just thinking like, if something did come up in '24, like all of a sudden we got both of them. We might have to either borrow money or look at something for the ambulance, but I don't disagree with what it's taken for regular police vehicles, it's just.
It's, like I said, they, we've ordered that over two years ago for the ambulance, and now it's just finally going into engineering, so we're just trying to stay ahead of the game on the other one.
Okay. So no formal action yet, but it may be something coming up, okay?
And normally, they put in for grants for that, so a good portion of it is actually paid for by your grant
Oh.
for it as well. And that's what I have on my today.
Okay, Jamie?
Talked to Candy last night, she did get her scoria, she's continuing to work to haul dirt. Weather permitting, this rain wasn't helpful to her. Jim, not really anything, Chris was up here with Cor looking at stuff last week. There was a West Dakota media, annual conference end of last week in Dickinson, but I wasn't able to attend, just because we had the Daco earlier in the week. Landfall still does have an opening. Hoping something comes along soon, so. I oh, LEPC is tomorrow. So, I think that's it.
Okay, Rick?
The main thing, I guess, that Jamie can help me with a little bit on this is Mo from West Code Essential Services?
Yeah.
They're gonna be needing some office space and I can't remember what he said, his reason was.
So we're trying to, right now, like an eligibility worker for like Medicaid type services. Everything is in McLean County or Oliver County, since we lost our social services building over here, so Mo told us at NADACO that it, he could, you know, maybe once a week or once every other week, get somebody over to Stanton or Bueller or something to help Mercer County residents. He's just looking for some space. And I said, well, we've got, you know, we've got a boardroom here, we've got the outpost building in Bueller, we've got different options that we can explore to help our county residents have better access to that. Those services and.
I think what spurred this too is just that, you know, they've changed theirs to zones, and then it's a central calling system, and it's unfortunately, those calling services have been kind of overloaded with the calls, and so, like, I think you said you waited forty-five minutes.
Forty-five minutes, and, but there, that is a improvement, but that improvement is from like an hour and a half, so forty-five minutes for some individuals that are on minutes or wifi or limited to where they can use their phone is.
It's really not feasible.
Right.
Or for us to try and help them out, just sit there on the phone and wait that long too, so that's why Mo and Rick and Jamie had discussed about possibly putting somebody at either.
It hap, it happened, the discussion was had during one of the outbreak sessions at the NADACO conference, so it's.
He also mentioned too that, just for information, if they are averaging around eleven thousand calls a week, and they missed one day because of a holiday, they were up to fourteen thousand calls a day.
Yeah.
Right, so it was just way over.
Call center is being well utilized, but some of it is, you can't call your local offices anymore, just for a simple question, but he did say they're supposed to, the first few rings are supposed to go directly to like Washburn or Center if that individual's in the office, for just a simple, simple question, if it's anything eligibility related, it then goes to the call center, so. Work in progress, I think they, the ladies, the ladies kept saying positive intentions. I think they're trying to improve the system, but it's the zones have been a little taxing.
The other one was, well, like Fairboard, I don't, I mean, annual meetings coming up, Recorder's Office has been quiet, Ron's always pretty quiet over there. The Sheriff's Office, one thing, you probably saw the car bills in here, and like, I asked Carmen and Cheese for everybody's information. Twenty-one, twenty-two M fund is empty, so we won't be rolling it over, we don't have to worry about moving that money just for your information, so. And that's about all I have at the moment, so.
Okay, Jean?
I'm pretty sure, I'm watching, roads are an ongoing thing. So we're working on them. I did not attend the last suite board meeting. The other departments that I have, everything's quiet. So I don't have anything else.
Okay. Highway Department?
Ken or Charlie are coming, I think that was.
Okay, Andrew, you know Charlie?
Part of it won't be here, because he's at that conference.
Yeah, Charlie's at a conference, but I guess. Who, who put it on the agenda, was it, I mean.
We asked for it. You asked to have Charlie and Todd here, so that this can be discussed together, because there was a discrepancy in what they both communicated.
If we get both in the same room, then you get to ask the questions and get, so did you want to put that off till the November 1st? Because I had mentioned that.
Yeah, I don't.
Charlie and.
I think, just because we have a.
I mean, we, we have a decision, but if we want to bring it back up, we can definitely do it. It's correctable on the other end, you know, so I don't, I don't, I don't see why we couldn't postpone it, I mean, if we want more discussion with those two here, and like I said, I talked to Todd this morning, he was hoping to be here by 10, but he wasn't overly confident.
It doesn't do us.
No, because Charlie's.
We had, you know, Todd's side last time, not sides, but they had conversation and it seemed different, so.
Okay.
If Charlie can come next time and.
He should be, I, I don't know, I mean, yeah, he had a conference in Grant Forks.
Do we want to?
What's that?
Do we want to move it down the road some more?
It, it doesn't matter to me, I, I don't think I'm gonna change my mind. I don't know if, I mean, it was just one of those things we wanted of both sides, but.
And I mean, we can leave it as is and still post the question when Charlie's here next time, I don't, like you said, it probably won't change anything, but.
But I mean, if we want.
We can put it on the agenda.
We can put it on the agenda, yeah.
Under highway.
Right. Solar ordinance, is that something that we gotta wait till 10:30?
Guys, what are, what are you here for? For funsies?
For funsies?
Okay.
Okay, where are we on the solar ordinance?
I just was making sure you weren't here for a certain item and.
Cindy was gonna be in here?
Could we bring Cindy back in?
Can I go grab her?
Yep, go grab Cindy.
And I do have copies of this ordinance, the one that's registered. Do you guys wanna copy it? Okay, so three, four, five. This is the one that was registered in the public.
Did I get past this now? Oh, yeah. No, they all see. It's just a motion and seconded.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Do you, oh, where'd she go? My gosh, she disappeared on me.
Carmen or Jamie?
Carmen.
She went to get Cindy.
Cindy.
Yeah.
Carmen, do you have a copy of this for Dan?
Yes, I do, Dan. I made another copy.
Thanks, Carmen.
Okay, you may look at copy of that. This was the timeline of this moratorium. And I followed in and... Okay, so when I went through on this moratorium, we put it in place in twenty-twenty or twenty-one. So it actually expired the thirtieth of September.
This is what I was wondering.
Yeah, I knew it was like really close. Okay, I'll just review the, the sheet that you handed out here, just so the public knows. Solar ordinance moratorium went in place on March eighteenth, twenty-twenty, was to be in place for one year. On February third of twenty-twenty-one, it was extended for six months. On May fourth of twenty-twenty-two, it was extended until nine-thirty of twenty-twenty-two. And then on nine-seven of twenty-twenty-two, it was extended for one year and expired September thirtieth of this year, so twenty-twenty-three. Solar ordinance, public hearing was June seventh, twenty-twenty-three. June twenty-first of twenty-twenty-three, the commission approved. There was a thirty-day public comment period from June twenty-eighth through July twenty-eighth. No comments from the public were received during that time. So, on the agenda, we have moratorium status, so essentially, the moratorium has expired. I don't think there's anything for us to do unless we wanted to reenact it. From my understanding, the ordinance is in place, and if we wanted to make changes, we could make those changes. However, moratorium is expired, so if you got an application, we'd have to base it on, on the ordinance that was approved.
And to make changes, you're gonna have to go through the whole like PNZ thing again, I would think. Cause that's how it is when anything is bad.
I don't think so, I think we can just make changes.
Right.
You could have only done that during the thirty-day period, I think.
No, we could change, in fact, if a commissioner made a motion and it got approved and did, got voted in, I could say I wanna replace everything, starting with Chapter Three, to the very last word with complete different wording.
Well, but not according to our ordinance, it has to go through planning and zoning.
Then it would take the thirty-day, again, public notice time because we'd make a change, and after that, it would be, it could be adopted or deleted.
Well, then we need to update the ordinance, cause the ordinance doesn't say that if you wanna make changes to, to it, unless you're a commissioner, it doesn't say that.
Does it say in here that it would have to go to the PNZ first?
Any amendment to the ordinance goes to PNZ first, that's what I'm seeing.
Okay.
Normally.
Well, why is it, why is it, okay, let's say, let's say we're not talking about solar, let's say we're talking about...
Just anything, yeah, make a generic kind of...
Sanamine or whatever, it would have to go through the planning and zoning first, that's how you amend the ordinance. And then they have the public hearings over there. But I mean, unless, if you guys wanna change the ordinance, go ahead and change the ordinance, but then you have to change it to, unless you're a county commissioner, you can make a change.
Cindy, you might not know, I can't, but you know where that is, like, you're talking about a general, when you say like change the ordinance, they can change ordinance, but you're talking about probably something near the beginning of the book that just says for all...
Like on, chapter two, I believe it is.
For any kind of ordinance that coming acts, this is the process of how you would amend it.
Right, that's it.
And you don't know where that is?
Well, I can find it, but...
That was a new question. Where do I see that or look at that?
It's in, it's in our ordinance. You have a copy of the ordinance, I think it's in Chapter Two.
I mean, I, it was in my folder, I don't have my...
I, I didn't see it either, like honestly, I, I...
Oh, it's not in this.
No.
It's not specifically in this, it's in a...
Well, it just says to amend an ordinance, or to amend the ordinance, they give it to me, and then it goes to planning and zoning, and then to the commission, that's what it says.
Okay, so if, if we wanted to make a change, we would have to go through the process, and whatever that process says, we'd follow it.
Right.
Unless you change the ordinance.
I know where you're getting, Jean, but I mean, if, if we have a, an order's in place, it's...
The five commissioners can either approve or disapprove.
Correct.
Whether we make a total change and it goes back to planning and zoning, it can. If that's a procedure that was adopted and it's in a policy of some sort Mercer County, that's fine. But then even after planning and zoning gets done with it, we still can make changes and disapprove or approve any changes we want.
And that's right, and it's a lot less work for me. I don't have to run the ads, I don't have to print out all the stuff. It's easier for me if you, you guys just do it. I'm just saying that's what the ordinance is.
Cindy, can you, can you get me or us a copy of, of that starter pack of ordinances? Cause I think that would have been helpful.
Right, well, nobody even told me that this was on the agenda, people. You don't put it by my time slot, you don't tell me what you want, I mean...
No, I, honestly, I didn't know there was a draft on the ordinances, so.
Yeah, but I mean, as far as the agenda, I...
Put it on there at the last meeting.
I think we just wanted the status of it.
And the only thing we really wanna know is if we still had a solar moratorium, and if we needed to do anything about it then, cause we had it.
And I believe that, I believe even though it was until September thirtieth, I think it actually went away once you guys approved of...
And it very well could have.
I, I think that's a...
I wouldn't disagree with that.
We only had it on there cause we were writing the ordinance.
So, but nobody has applied at this point, so. So, I, I, I think we just wanted clarification, we put it on so that, like, this little, we could have the...
Copy of the ordinance, or the ordinance, it says the process.
Yeah. Didn't, didn't mean to startle you, I said, it just was one of those things that we had talked about at the last meeting, and we threw it on the agenda just so that we knew where we were as far as it pertains to solar. So, thanks.
I think that's it.
I think I would like to make a motion to put the moratorium for the solar ordinance back in place for another year. Or six months, I guess, six months.
Okay, there is a motion by Jamie to put a six-month moratorium on solar. Is there a second?
I'm gonna second that, just, I'll second that.
Seconded by Rick, discussion?
My discussion and reason why I seconded it was that, until we have this all cleared up and we're totally satisfied and we have no applications right now, so we, we do have a little window to, that would help to, you know, till we, we have everything in place and done.
Okay, any other discussion?
I just feel like, yeah, this, the whole process of it, and maybe it's just being new and coming in in the middle of something started. Just to less, to unmuddy the water, I would, that's my thoughts.
Any other discussion?
And it's under, for, for reference, it's also understood that we can lift the moratorium even a month from now, so, just, just for clarity.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Jamie?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Liza?
Nay.
I'm gonna vote nay. Motion passes, we have a moratorium in place for six months. So that would be, we're in October, November, December, January, February, March, it'd be April, let's call it April eighteenth. Okay.
But like you said, we can lift it, so.
We can lift it at any time.
Yep.
Okay, that's all we have on the agenda. Any other?
I had a question, but I forgot.
Oh, Rick had a question, but he's gonna think about it.
It's always fixed it out, I've been thinking about it, so it's not gonna have been out of work, so.
And just for...
Oh, an email that you had, where were you at with, have you heard any more with those?
The letters?
With, um, we had a close hearing, or not, what do you call it?
The executive sessions and stuff, I have, only that they have received it.
That was my question.
And then, just a little side note, I did text our state's attorney and ask him about the horse thing, which I asked about. I won't read what he, a word for word what he said, but it's going, moving forward. They're going to resolve it, it sounds like.
Okay.
Okay.
Good to know.
Thank you for checking on that, Jean.
Anything else? Seeing none, meeting adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Okay, and Travis, we have a deed to get you to sign before you leave, we got tons of stuff to sign.
Those are all so, so bills, if you could break me a P.